I now call the January 17th, 2017 Regular Council Meeting to order. Would members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Just to note that council meetings can be viewed on Channel 192. Anybody in the audience who would like to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on up. I was kind of looking for like the youngster that might want to come up and sit in the mayor's chair, but y'all are welcome. I'm pretty excited. Y'all got a lot of passion out there. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 3rd, 2017 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on January 11th, 2017.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Corrections?
Yeah, Mayor Humphrey, given some of the, oh, thank you. Thanks, Mayor Humphrey. Given some of the statements addressed by the public, I think it would be best or to move to amend the following sentence, and it should read, "Amy Kidd, 455 Bilton, requesting police staffing increases and community partnership for sexual assault victims." I didn't hear it was specifically for any other group of victims such as fraud or identity theft, and if you feel the same way, a second would move that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have discussion on this as well, right? Discussion?
Your Honor, I guess I'm confused. What are we trying to amend?
So the original sentence just said partnership for victims specifically.
Oh, okay.
And I'm just identifying it for what they're advocating.
Any other questions? Does that make sense? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
I will amend.
Motion passes, and amendment will be made. And, Your Honor, you'll still need to cast the vote and record the vote for the minutes as amended.
Did I skip that whole part?
Nope. The amendment was put in, so you'd still need to approve the amendments, the, all you approved was the amendment, now you need to approve the minutes as amended.
Gotcha. Do I still need a movement and a second? Okay, so we're gonna, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay, are we ready for bright spots?
Excuse me, Your Honor, you still have one more item, I believe, agenda item.
We still have bills and claims. Gotcha. Jesse, you threw me off, man. I'm not that smart. I'm gonna have to step up my game. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the January 17th, 2017 Bills and Claims is audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Abstentions? No?
No abstentions. Just a clarification from City Manager McDonald. Some of the refunds from the utility companies, specifically the water utilities, could you go into detail on where that comes from or why that is? Does that have anything to do with some of the concerns of citizens that we heard from last year regarding overages on water?
Your Honor, I don't believe they do. They come from refunds of utility deposits put on, paid when they sign their services up, and then they've gone a period of time that those can be released, or they've disconnected their services, and that's a balance left over of their deposit minus their last bill.
Standing. Thank you.
Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Now we'd like to welcome members of the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Casper Class in attendance tonight. Would you please care to stand so that we can acknowledge you? And would someone from your group please come forward to receive the proclamation that we have for you? You got the short straw, huh? I'm gonna give this a read for you all. Your proclamation states, "Whereas the Leadership Casper Program presents monthly in-depth studies of specific topics as they relate to the community. Participants gain a better understanding of community issues with a greater respect for the resources and services provided in the Casper community through site visits, tours, and involvement in interactive programs. Leadership Casper offers educational and participatory experiences with opportunities to meet community leaders and network with a wide array of people. Leadership Casper inspires emerging and established leaders to increase their skills, knowledge, and participation in the community. Therefore, I canine Humphrey, Mayor of the City of Casper, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2017 as Leadership Casper Day." That is your proclamation.
Thank you.
Do we have, do we have a photo op? Just checking, because usually there's a photo op.
Absolutely, absolutely. Photo op with the oldest member of the leadership.
Or the oldest member on campus.
Thank you.
Okay, you're stuck. Do you want us to make a funny face? While we have everybody, is there anybody that'd like to speak a little bit about this program, whether audience, council? You can come down to the microphone. Good evening.
My name is Michaela Meddy, and I'm a current participant in this year's class. So, a little bit about the program. We meet once a month to have leadership training in the mornings, and then each day has a specific topic. The most recent one was Government Day, so we came and met with Ray and learned a little bit about how the city works. We went to the county, we went to the fire department, got to see all the cool fire trucks and that sort of thing. But mostly, we learn a lot about just our community in general, meet a lot of new people, and develop ourselves professionally. So, thank you.
Okay, this sounds like a really excellent way to grow and learn new things. I'm glad you guys are participating. Any comments from council?
I just heard this is the best group the leadership group has ever had.
Perfect. I would happen to agree.
I didn't say that. That's what I heard.
Thank you.
Councilman Huckabee.
Congratulations to you all. I too am a graduate of Leadership Casper, and I feel like that experience helped me out a lot, grow professionally and personally, and I think it's a great use of time. So congratulations to all of you.
Okay, as well this evening, we have a proclamation to honor National Mentoring Month. Amanda Robbins Lilly is here to represent the Greater Wyoming Big Brother and Big Sisters. Would you please come forward so we can share this proclamation with you? Actually, if you guys want to come up behind me, I have an idea. Do you guys think you can share this big chair? Or do you want to stand? Okay. I need help reading this proclamation. So we're gonna share paragraphs, okay? And I'm gonna help you. You ready to read a proclamation? Okay. Okay, you ready? I'm gonna help you with any hard words. So we're gonna start right here. You want to hold the microphone? Okay. Okay, ready? Whereas, the citizens of Casper recognize that our success depends on the helping every child succeed in school and reach their full potential in life. Do you know this word? Say it. And, perfect, and realize that young people need a solid foundation of support that will help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens. Okay, should we give him a turn? Okay. You ready for this? You want the microphone? Or you think you can yell it? Okay. So we'll follow along here, okay? Mentoring.
Mentoring is a proven effective strate- strategy that helps children and young adults by matching them with a caring, responsible adult who can provide guidance and direction and build their confidence, and mentors build character, encouragement, success, boost confidence, lift expectations, and inspire young people to do their best serving as friends, role models, teachers, and sources of
Stability.
Stability, and support during a critical time in a child's life, and
Do you want to try one more time? Okay, here we go. This is getting tough. You ready? Research shows that mentoring beneficial. Has beneficial and long-term effects on youth by increasing their academic engagement and decreasing the likelihood of substance abuse and other risky, what's that word? Behaviors. Behaviors, alright. Let's do one more. Mentoring strengthens our city's economic and social well-being by
Helping
Young people.
Young people.
Now say it really loud.
Helping young people.
Yes, helping young people fulfill their potential while helping maintain healthy families and promoting more vibrant communities. You ready for a break? Okay. Alright, over to this star now. So we're right here.
Every day residents of Casper are making a profound difference in the lives of your young people by serving as mentors, supporters, supported by many private and public sectors.
Organizations.
Organizations that offer memory
Mentoring.
Mentoring
Opportunities.
Opportunities for youth and thousands of Casper children in need of caring adult mentors.
In their lives.
In their lives.
And clothing.
And clothing. This memory gap will take more investment per partnership and volume volunteers, ready to make difference in a child's life.
Okay, should I finish it up? Okay, now stay here so that you guys can grab this. So in case you didn't catch that, thousands of Casper's children are in need of caring adult mentors in their lives. Closing this mentoring gap will take more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life. Thousands of Casper's children are in need of these adult mentors. We've got to close this gap. Therefore, I canine Humphrey, Mayor of the City of Casper, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2017 as National Mentoring Month in our community, and use this as an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Casper's youth through mentoring. Okay, should we do a photo op?
Sure, can we get all of our bigs up here, too? And parents?
And PY.
And PY.
Who wants to hold it? How about one hand? Both of you have one hand on each side. Y'all didn't know we were gonna torture you tonight, did you?
Thank you.
I want to stay in this chair.
You want to stay in this chair forever? Okay, if I need to squish or anything. Did we fit? Do we need funny faces or anything?
Go ahead and do a funny face.
Okay. You guys didn't do the funny face. I don't know about you guys, but I think when somebody as adorable as those guys read a proclamation, it's a heck of a lot better than listening to me read the proclamation. Okay, please read the consent agenda title, if I'm in the right spot.
Established February 7, 2017 as a public hearing date for consideration of transfer of location for retail liquor license number 21 Modern Electric Company doing business as Wyoming Bootlegger Liquor from 246 West First Street to 240 West First Street.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Okay, I cut it over here first.
Second, between Mr. Walsh and I.
Alright, we'll go move by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Councilman Johnson. That sound good? We might have to have some different voice tones. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the vacation and replat to create the Raven Crest Edition. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald. That document dated January 12th, 2017. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 3rd, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, Harmony Hills Holding LLC, Harmony Development LLC, and High Plains Investments LLC have applied to vacate and replat portions of Sunrise Hills Number 3, Sunrise Hills Number 12, and Harmony Hills Edition Number 2, Phase 1 of a property totaling approximately 6.6 acres to create the Raven Crest Edition. The property is zone C2, general business, and is surrounded by properties zoned the same. The proposed Raisin Crest Raven, not raisins, raven. Raven Crest Edition is creating a single lot on which the applicant is proposing to develop a multifamily residential property which is a permitted use under the current zoning of the property. As anticipated, the city will be reviewing a site plan for the multifamily project located on the property in February of 2017. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the requested vacation replat after a public hearing on December 15th, 2016. There were no public comments received.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the Raven Crest Edition, please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Lisa Burridge, Harmony Development. Address is 421 South Center. I think that the application is pretty straightforward. It's a 6.6 acre parcel that Blue Line Development, who has developed other properties here in Casper, plans to put an apartment complex, meets the zoning, and we've met with city officials, and it looks like we've met all the requirements of what the city requires. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Burridge. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the Raven Crest Edition, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the issues involving the Raven Crest Edition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving the Raven Crest Edition subdivision agreement and the vacation and replat creating Raven Crest Edition comprising 6.6 acres, more or less.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading. The ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Discussion? Amendments?
I would just like to say what I've said before about the development of this large parcel that has been vacant ever since I came to Casper. It's just nice to see this moving forward, and as the city has moved eastward and westward, parcels like this need to be developed so that we, it is, I suppose you could say it's on the outskirts of town, but really it is a kind of infill, and this is what we need to be doing in our town, is finding these parcels and developing them so that our land is utilized. So it's a good thing to see this moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the annexation and plat creating Wolf Creek 9 Edition. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item, as in the previous matter. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald, dated January 12th, 2017. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune. That document dated January 3rd, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, Mesa Development Incorporated has applied to annex a 1.467 acre parcel which is being incorporated into a replat consisting of a total of 20.1 acres, more or less, to create the Wolf Creek 9 Edition. The proposed Wolf Creek 9 Edition is located between Wolf Creek, the Wolf Creek neighborhood on the south, and the Mountain Plaza Shopping Center on the north. The Wolf Creek neighborhood consists of R1 residential estate properties, and the Mountain Plaza Shopping Center consists of commercial and multifamily uses. The proposed zoning of the Wolf Creek 9 Edition provides a transition from lower density, less intense land uses on the south to higher density, more intense land uses on the north. In association with this action, the applicant has applied for an R2 one-unit residential and R4 high-density residential zoning for the proposed Wolf Creek 9 Edition. The applicant has stated that the intention for the R4 high-density residential portion of the Wolf Creek 9 Edition is the construction of twin homes. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the annexation of the plat, but tabled the zoning of the area because the applicant objected to one of the conditions of the plat. Later, the applicant was able to comply with the recommended condition and stated he wished to move the proposal forward to the city council for review. The Planning and Zoning Commission will review the zoning component of the proposed project in its January public hearing, and if approved, the zoning will catch up with the annexation plat in the future city council meetings as the second and third readings occur. With the exception of the applicant who spoke in favor, there were no public comments received at the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing on December 15th, 2016. There were, however, three letters in opposition to the development of the area, and it's before you tonight to consider.
Okay. This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the Wolf Creek 9 Edition, please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Humphrey, and City Council. I'm Sean Gustafson with ECS Engineers, the, I guess you'd say, the authors of this plat. The concession that the applicant made was to connect a road from, and I'm gonna miss the names because I haven't studied up on the names of the roads yet because we keep changing them, but I believe it's Dancing Wolf Drive to Talon. Because of block length, there was asked to be a connector road between those two. The original proposed location was pretty prohibitive as far as grade goes. From an engineering standpoint, I wouldn't design a road with that kind of a grade, but we later, talking with Mr. Collins and planning staff, we moved the road a little bit farther to the west, which would line up with the access to the senior apartments or senior center there. Anyway, so anyway, I guess from there, the piece that we are annexing, as the city manager said, is a small piece, and that is set aside as a drainage parcel so that we can detain the drainage from this and not inundate Wyoming Boulevard and so on. So, that, I'd love to answer. Any questions?
Questions?
Your Honor. So there were three letters in opposition, you said, City Manager?
Yes.
And have you guys talked to those folks and discussed what their issue was?
I wish Mr. Hall was here this evening. I believe they have discussed with them what the issue was. It was more on a, my understanding of it, it was more on the fact that part of this area farther to the north was gonna be a little higher density, an R4 type residential, and they didn't want that up against the back of the existing Wolf Creek subdivision. So, the lots, as they're planted on the back of that subdivision, are very, are nice, large lots that would actually need a higher zoning, so.
Go ahead.
On the first map that we saw, is there just one access into this?
No, there's actually three now. There would be an access, which is not shown here, and I do have a plat of the whole area. It's a big one. I gotta bring a big one so I can read it. The Wolf Creek 8 area is the open area to the east in there. There's an access from Aspen Lane in there. You've got an access off of Talon, and now we have the cut across from Talon to Dancing Wolf Drive.
And what I'm looking, I'm looking the same way as you just in a dark spot. To the south, that's where the neighbors are supposed to have on the apartments?
That's my understanding, yes. That's all single residences to the south, yes. And, yeah, and large lots, as you see it there. Those are, I think, the smallest lot along the backside. There's 8,000 square feet, and it moves on up from there, so.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in favor? At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the Wolf Creek 9 Edition, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the issues involving the Wolf Creek 9 Edition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving an annexation, vacation, replat, and subdivision agreement for the proposed Wolf Creek 9 Edition in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading. The ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Discussion?
What I said earlier. No, it's great to see this moving forward as well, and it's also No, it's great to see this moving forward as well, and it's also, it's also just good to see our developers having confidence that our community is still growing. And people aren't going to be building houses if they don't believe there's a market, and so appreciate that confidence.
Other discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the Fairgrounds Home Edition subdivision agreement and the vacation and replat creating Fairgrounds Home Edition comprising 5.57 acres, more or less.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading. The consent ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Pacheco. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Counsel will now discuss the resolution of the Washington Park Bleachers Project. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by counsel. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with WLC Engineering for the Washington Park Bleachers Project.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Mr. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, WLC Engineering is currently under contract for design and construction administration for the Washington Park Bleachers Project. During construction, the project required that WLC Engineering provide more onsite observation and guidance than originally proposed during the design and bidding. Several challenges in the block layout were encountered and many final directive changes had to be made for the project. Additionally, the contractor was granted a 30-day time extension to finish the project. This time extension caused WLC to incur additional construction observation costs beyond what was initially anticipated. WLC has requested additional $35,000 for the construction administration fees. The city's engineering office has reviewed the WLC's proposal and finds it in order. Andrew Beamer, the city's Public Services Director, and Jason Myers of WLC is here tonight for any questions.
Okay. With that, I'll open it up to counsel discussion, and do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Myers.
Mayor and Counsel, I'm Jason Myers. I'm with WLC Engineering. Our office address is 200 Pronghorn, Casper.
Thanks, Mayor Humphrey. Mr. Myers, during the pre-bid discussions and also post-bid, when it was awarded to 71 Construction, I was just wondering, did you guys hash out a possibility of it being extended due to weather or when you initially put the bid in, I believe it was in February, to the city of Casper, did you see it going past October 31st?
At the time, we had provided our proposal to the city and the agreement was made to provide our professional services. The construction of this project wasn't scheduled to be until the summer. At that time, we had provided those, that scope of work and that cost. We had no idea when, the timing that it was going to be built or which contractor was going to get it. There was many variables that we did not know. We based our fee and scope of work on conversations with city staff on what their expectations of us was going to be. And as you had mentioned, that was in January 16.
Yeah, just a follow-up. Also, 71 Construction and also, you know, your engineering group, well-respected within, you know, your business avenues. So I was just curious, did you find it surprising that you had to oversee 71 Construction's project as much as you did? It was already planned on visiting their construction site two to three times in a week?
It did not surprise us one bit. Normally, when we provide professional services, especially construction services for the city of Casper, most of the time, we are required to be onsite basically full-time. With the scope of this project, ourselves and city staff did not feel it was warranted to spend that much time. And as it turned out with some of the challenges that we ran into with construction, that it was warranted for us to be there, help contractor, answer questions, just oversee what was going on.
One last follow-up. I did actually see the extension that was given to 71 Construction. That pretty much cleared up the majority of the questions that I had that I was given today regarding the projects, some with the drainage going from, I think, eight inch to six inch or vice versa. So I appreciate you being here. I just wanted better clarity on it, and it looks great. I went out and looked at it, and it's definitely going to be long-lasting. Looks really durable, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do, went and took a look at it, well, several times, actually, during construction and post-construction, and the design really came out very well. There won't be any maintenance on anything out there for the next 25 years, and it really has the ability to allow people to bring in their own chairs if they want to have a little more comfortable seat than a piece of concrete, so I just want to thank you guys for a nice engineering job that looks nice and construction work.
Well, thank you very much. Actually, that was a brainchild of city staff. We just put it into motion.
Well, to city staff, then.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or amendments on this topic? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Counsel will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 8B1, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Headquist Construction, Inc. for the Eastdale Creek Channel repair at Wisconsin Street Project. Item 8B2, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Trito Construction, LLC for the solid waste gate improvements project. Item 8B3, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Caricon, Inc. for air emissions monitoring and reporting for the Casper Regional Solid Waste Facility and stormwater management services for the Casper Regional Solid Waste Facility and Casper Service Center. Item 8B4, a resolution authorizing a transportation alternative program agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Rotary Park Pathway Phase Two Project. Item 8B5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Headquist Construction, Inc. for the Brookview Drive sanitary sewer replacement project.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Gonna have to strengthen that finger. Counsel will now consider minute action items. These are the business items that do not require resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 10A1, authorizing the reappointment of David DiValla to the Civil Service Commission for an additional three-year term. Item 10A2, authorizing the purchase of one new spray injection patching machine from Denver Industrial Sales and Service Company to be used in the Street Division of the Public Service Department. Item 10A3, authorizing the purchase of one used street sweeper from CMI TECO to be used in the Streets Division of the Public Services Department. Item 10A4, reallocating of capital funds from the purchase of an aerial lift truck to a mower in the weed mowing section of the Parks Division.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Pacheco. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay, now's the time we would invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council to come forward. We'd ask you to state your name and address. We won't respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to the City Manager. We may not be able to answer all of your questions, and we'd ask you to keep your presentations to five minutes. So who would like to come down first? Good evening.
Dennis Steensland, 533 South Washington, Casper. And I didn't want to come down first, but I'm here. I'm referring to Resolution A, the 35,000 additional for Washington Park Bleachers. What I'm picking up in past council meetings and whatnot is change orders and additional money to contracts that you've issued. So my concern is that, why is that continuing to go on? It seems like we've had a lot of cost overruns, 35,000 for supervising that. I live five, six blocks from that, kind of supervised it myself, but I would feel that's just part of their job. I don't think they need to be compensated an extra 35,000. And in most cases, I'm referring back to change orders that have come up. There's been many of them in the last six months or so. It seems like it's getting out of hand. It sounds like it's a trend. I'm hoping somebody on the council now is in charge of following those and maybe cut back on them. The money's still tight. So not one in particular, this one just brought it up. But anyway, I think there is a trend going on as, as far as overrides and change orders. Councilman Powell, not Powell, Hopkins, I think that the arrangement of those seats, seating arrangement, is terrible. You know, if you want to go over there and sit on the concrete, that's one thing, but if you want to bring your own chair, it's another. I thought it was half-done. I thought he was asking for 35 to put some benches on there. To me, it will never wear out, but I don't know, the other one was there for what, 50, 75 years? They did maybe replace the benches a couple times, but, but anyway, I for one don't care for the arrangement there, so.
Councilman Walsh, did you have something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a comment, but maybe this isn't a question, so I can just hold it until we get done on the exact issue.
Anyone else? Councilman Morgan, and then Councilman Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor Humphrey. Mr. Steensland, this was a concern of mine, that's why it was pulled off the resolution or consent agenda, and the amount of money, this project was an eight-week project originally, and it went eight weeks longer than it originally anticipated. So WLC was overseeing the engineering, and as it was mentioned earlier, the drainage had to be redone. The forms were interesting and moving or getting there, setting it, the concrete. In addition to that, the fiscal year '15 tax is covering this portion of it, just so you know.
I understood that part of it. What's the sense of having a bid process and contracts issued if, in fact, they don't pick up the fact that they've got to go eight inches instead of six? And, you know, that's it, that to me is the object of contracting. Always, there's, there's change orders, I guess, in, in construction, but it just seems like there's getting to be a lot, a lot of change orders. And I noticed Headquist is on these now. Couple years back, that's what the big hurrah was with Headquist. Didn't think he was a reliable contractor, quote-unquote. I thought he was.
Councilman Murphy, and then Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Steensland, this one did catch my attention too, and so I understand what you're saying. And I think because this one did catch my attention, going forward, I'll be more careful to, to watch out for these things, because if something is bid and then there's a, there's a change order, and that's natural, but when it's a lot more, you just can't keep coming back to the well and thinking, I don't think we should take it that way, that the taxpayers are, are an endless supply of funds for every project that comes along. If the worst thing in the world would happen in this case is that we had to stop it and they couldn't go forward with it, sometimes that's going to happen. And right now, we're pretty tight on money, so that's a possibility. So I think your point's valid, and I appreciate you coming forward.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Steensland, you said it yourself, in the construction business, change orders are not unusual. We have some change orders that go up and some change orders that bring the price down. And a lot of times, we'll see that after we do what's known as value engineering, when we look at a project, say, look, we're partway through this and we see ways to save some money. But by and large, I can't tell you how many are up and how many are down, but you do run into anticipated construction issues when you get out on the ground. There may be things that aren't marked. I know in some cases, we've done some major utility work, and we found things that were not on any maps, and they do require change orders. It's not, not necessarily the fault of anybody, whether it's engineering or the contractor, but sometimes you just have to modify the contract, and that's essentially what a change order is. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, sometimes it's for additional work, and it's just part of the construction business. So I hear what you're saying, though.
I've been around the construction business, and I understand that as well, but I can only recall one where it went down, and that was that acid treatment on the sewer line someplace recently. They changed the design of the building, as I remember. That one went down as far as costs to the city, but my concern is just it seems to be a trend that's continuing to go up. That's the only reason I brought it up, up here. Thanks much.
Thanks.
Councilman Johnson, go ahead.
And anybody can correct me if I'm wrong here, but, you know, when we budget for these projects, we do budget in a contingency for things, for change orders and things that might come along. And so as it stands now, even with this change order, this is still within the budget, correct? The budget that we had originally set for this project, so it's not costing any more, it's still within budget because of the contingency that we set aside within the budget.
I see. Back to Jesse's comment, to me, it doesn't make any difference if it's 15 cent tax money or operating funds tax money, it's all people's money that come before the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else in the audience would like to come down and visit with counsel? Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me. Dale Zimmerly, 3035 Bel Air Drive. I had brought up at the last meeting about starting the meetings with prayer, and I, I did some research and wanted to share a little history about prayer in this country. This is a lot harder for me right now. I got a phone call this evening at 5:30 from my mother. She had found my father having a seizure on the floor today, and he's in the hospital right now, and it wasn't a stroke, and, but talk about time for prayer, and makes me think about prayer rather more. But let me get on with the history of our country. I found a article written by a former chaplain of the United States Senate. His name is Lloyd Ogilville. He wrote this. Prayer and patriotism, excuse me, prayer and patriotism are inseparably connected. Prayer for our nation inspires us to greater patriotism, and the more patriotic we become, the more we want to pray for our beloved nation. One of the most dynamic expressions of our patriotism is constant prayer for those who are called to seek and do his will in government. Our nation was birthed out of the womb of prayer. Our founding fathers made a powerful, prayerful declaration of dependence on September 7th, 1774, that eventually led to the courageous Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 1776. It occurred at the first meeting of the Continental Congress in 1774, held in Carpenter's Hall in Philadelphia. Among the delegates was Colonel George Washington, then aged 42. He was a member of the Virginia House of Burgesses. He had cast a vote for Virginia to hold a day of prayer for the people of Boston. He had cast a vote for Virginia to hold a day of prayer for the people of Boston. Preparing for the Continental Congress, he wrote in his diary, "Went to church and fasted all day. He was ready to join the other representatives of the colonies in making a declaration of dependence on God." So was John Adams. In his diary, he wrote about the profound longing for God's strength and courage. He said, "I wander alone and ponder. The objects before me are too grand. We have not men fit for the times. We are deficient in genius, in education, in travel, in fortune, in everything. I feel an utterable anxiety. God grant us wisdom and fortitude." Another stunning example of our nation's dependence on God came during a Constitutional Convention in 1787, when a frail 81-year-old man rose to seek recognition when the convention was deadlocked. What he said reminds us of the power of prayer for any time that prolonged disagreement cripples progress. He said, "In the beginning of the contest with Great Britain, when we were sensible of danger, we had daily prayer. Our prayers, sir, were heard, and they were graciously answered. All of us who were engaged in the struggle must have observed frequent instances of the superintending providence in our favor. I have lived, sir, for a long time, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of this truth, that God governs in the affairs of men. And if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, is it probable that an empire can rise without his aid? I also believe that without his concurring aid, we shall succeed no better than the builders of Babel. We shall be divided by our little partial local interest. Our projects will be confounded. I therefore beg to move that henceforth prayers imploring the assistance of heaven and its blessing in our deliberations be held in this assembly every morning." The author of that motion was none other than Benjamin Franklin, and the chairman of the Constitutional Congress was George Washington. The motion was passed, prayers were prayed, and the Constitution was completed. I think it's very important that we look at the history of this country and what it was founded on. Several years ago, in Greece, New York, the city was sued about opening with prayer. That has been in court for seven years, and until 2014, the Supreme Court ruled on that. Justice Kennedy stated, "Prayers are meant to lend gravity to the occasion and reflect the values long part of this nation's heritage. Please consider asking clergy in this town to come and lead us in prayer before every meeting, so that this city council might be blessed with wisdom and vision and be known as a place people want to stay, and that people just don't come here to get an oilfield job and then move on." Thank you.
Got the five minutes down very well.
I didn't even time it, ma'am. I sure wasn't looking at that.
Pretty right on. Any questions, comments, feedback? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for that, and sorry to hear about your father.
Yeah.
And my prayers are with you and your father and your family.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel. I recognize some of you. I was here last year, so. My name's Mike Allen, 2760 Robertson Road, here in Casper, Wyoming. I am a head coach of a girls' softball team, the Casper Cobras. And I was just curious if there was a resolution, I haven't heard anything really, so I don't, I'm not sure, on the 13th and Sycamore fields? If, you know, if we've decided what we're doing with those? I know we've done a proposal with the Young Guns baseball team. We went in with them on a proposal to lease those fields. And I just, you know, I want to make sure that I stay under that, in your radar. We have a lot of girls that want to play ball, and, I mean, we're still reaching out to Glen Rock, Douglas, I mean, and it's kind of unfair. I mean, when you're looking at girls' softball and the city of Casper and boys' baseball, and how many fields we have that are for boys' baseball, girls' softball doesn't count in the city. So that's why we've asked several times for those fields. And I've talked to the folks in Gillette, who've built a beautiful complex for their girls, and how much money that brings to them. They have one tournament on a weekend, that's $800,000 to their city. That's a lot of money that we, you know, we could have that if we had those complexes. That's all I'm asking, and I want to make sure that the council, you know, understands that this is an ongoing thing that we, every year, I mean, this is my second year. I started this team last year, and it's my heart and soul. I mean, I can't tell you how passionate I am. I have two girls, I don't have boys, so, I mean, boys' baseball to me is, you know, whatever, you know? I've coached it. I have a son, he's 18, but, you know, he's moved on from boys' baseball. But now I have two girls who play softball, and they love it, and, I mean, that's kind of where we're at. I'd love to have some fields.
Councilman Powell, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. February 28th, sir, it's on our work session agenda.
Awesome.
I would also point out to you that in our lease agreement with one of the baseball teams, I assume this is the case for all of them, they are required to make it available to other user groups when it's not in use by their contract with us. So if you receive any resistance on that, call us.
Awesome. We do appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else in the audience wishes to speak to council? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, Tamara McNaughton, 2651 Lynn Lane. I did want to give a huge sincere thank you to both Mayor Humphrey and Mr. Vice Mayor Pacheco. We've been coming here since September, we calculated, and today we really felt like we're getting somewhere, so we're really excited. And I did, I spent a little bit of time this evening, after a conversation that Amy and I had today regarding the TIPS program. From my basic understanding from the Neshrona County Prevention Coalition, TIPS has been gone for about two years as a requirement for liquor-serving establishments to maintain their liquor license. When that was addressed during our strategic plan development this year, it kind of sparked some curiosity in my head as to why that went away. But then looking at it from kind of where my passion lies right now, I was able to pull some statistics from relatively recent years. University of Virginia actually conducted a six-year study on sexual assaults on their campus and other campuses in the state of Virginia. Forty-seven percent of college women who were assaulted believed that they were unable to resist their sexual assault because of alcohol. And 80% of college students reported that at some point during their four-year college career, unwanted sex was attributed to being under the influence of alcohol. And then kind of looking at it from the domestic violence standpoint, 76% of all convicted domestic abusers do convict those offenses while under the influence of alcohol. And given those statistics and kind of what we're facing here in the city of Casper with, you know, the sexual assault crimes and the domestic violence crimes, I think it's important that we take kind of a better look at the TIPS program and maybe reinitiating that as something that is mandatory for the bar owners. I know, you know, there might be pushback from the Wyoming Bar Owners Association, but there appears to be a problem with over-serving in some specific facilities, some specific facilities. And I think TIPS would probably help that, you know, at least alleviate some of that.
You want to start? Go ahead.
Hey, Tamara. So it's been two years, is that what NCPC said, that it's been two years since TIPS has been in use in Casper?
Well, I went through the last two years of strategic plans, and it was a strategic plan, it was on the item for a strategic plan last year as well, and it was on this year's.
So that's the hope of NCPC, would be to reinstitute TIPS into the community? Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The TIPS program, and I don't know for sure, may be given by other organizations. I know that the State Liquor Commission also does it, so if the Prevention Coalition isn't doing it, I know that it had been available in the past through multiple different avenues, and there was a time when it was going on monthly here in Casper, and because of local instructors or not local instructors, I think it scaled back to quarterly, and I don't know what it is now, but I'm not certain, just because the Prevention Coalition isn't doing it, it's not available, but I support the program, and I think it's great for the servers and bar owners to go through that.
We were really lucky. We did have a great conversation this morning where we were able to kind of drill down to the meat of, I guess, how everything kind of went down by timeframe for you guys, and that was very helpful, I think, for the vice mayor and I to put a timeframe to how things occurred, but then to also start brainstorming solutions. And we talked about education and some awareness. So I started typing that up this afternoon, I'm looking forward to getting that to you. At the same time, we are kind of lucky that we're working in tandem with city staff. The panel is kind of being put together. It sounds like this is going to be a newer panel with basically everybody that has an impact or insight or expertise in this area. We don't have the meeting set yet, but you guys will let us know when that's set. Also to work in tandem to try to maybe help solve the solution, and this is nothing I've ever seen since I've been on council, but we are going to move up our budget session by many months. And what that'll allow us to do is give us a better idea how much money we have to spend much sooner than what we would in the past. And I joked with, you know, with the city manager today that as much as I'd like to go buy a new bicycle, I need to balance my checkbook first before I go do that. So we're trying to get everything in order at a faster rate than we normally do, because let's face it, we all feel like we move at the speed of mud, and I think we do, but I think we have a really good path that we're on to now, and it was a great honor to visit with both of you. So thank you for bringing all your information. Anybody else on council? Go ahead.
Tamara, another resource for that would be Mike Mosier with the Wyoming State Liquors Association with TIPS. I intend to contact him as well, possibly to make some modifications to that curriculum. And secondly, I just want to say thank you for your patience while we address this as a council. It's, I think, from the outside looking in, it's probably very difficult to see any forward movement, but I feel like we are making forward movement. And I know that I met with Chief Wetzel last week, and I feel like we had a very productive conversation and that we can work together to address some of these issues in our community and make this a safer community.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks. We'll be in touch. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Good evening.
Amy Kidd, 455 Milton Avenue. I've been running around like a chicken with my head cut off all day, so I've got some baby spit up on me and chicken nugget drool and stuff, but I agree with what she said about TIPS. On another personal level, my daughter lost her father as a result of over-serving in this town. His autopsy report came back as ETOH, and he was only in one bar all night. So on a personal level, I hold that bar somewhat responsible for his death. So TIPS training would be very valuable. Dale, I always appreciate you speaking. Think of the meat of what he's said to me, anyway, is just the golden rule, you know, treat others how you expect to be treated, and through prayer and just common courtesy and respect. Someone asked me last week what a day in the life of Amy looks like, and I rambled on about no sleep and wrestling and football and ice skating and gymnastics and baseball and basketball. In between there, I've got to run kids to and from school and meal prep, and my house is loud all the time, and there's kids fighting, and I barely had time to make it here tonight. I'm always late. There's diapers to change. I didn't have time to be raped. I did not. And I think, you know, the other women that have contacted me and come forward, it's life-changing, truly life-changing. And to add in a rape to the mix of just your daily life and daily routine is, it alters your entire world. So first, you have to take the time to file a report, go through a rape kit. In my case, I was blessed with a pregnancy, so morning sickness and doctor's appointments and meeting with detectives and DNA and calling your detective and, you know, if so be it, mental health. And then, oh, my work took a toll. I was telling you guys some numbers I did very well two years ago with my job, owning a cleaning business. I just cleaned my little tail off. And last year, between the pregnancy and having a newborn, my little cleaning business made less than $14,000. And now, to year-to-date, I've made $180. Now, divided seven by seven people, that sure doesn't go very far. And I am not on public assistance or food stamps or whatever. But this rape has altered my entire life, and I really feel like, you know, when you make decisions about these things, think about if it was you or your family member, you know? I know you guys are busy, you have this, and you all wear 100 different hats, probably more than we could ever imagine. And just, you know, as you're going about your day and you're busy, just maybe think about what these women are experiencing and how delicate the situation is, especially when I hear things like, a woman was brave enough to go and report her rape, and the officer thought that the most appropriate setting was the bustling lobby of the police station last week. Blows my mind. So please listen to the women who have finally decided to come out of the woodwork. And I would also like to add that any task force that's created, please keep the survivors, just regular community members and victims of rape to be allowed to be on that board, because I think that's your third-party accountability right there.
Questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Amy. I would just like to publicly announce that I'm very grateful for the between 25 and 30 women that have contacted city council, some of them through you, some of them who have reached out to us directly. I haven't had time yet to respond to each of them individually, but it takes a lot of courage and strength and fortitude to do that. And I feel like in doing so, it's becoming more evident what a problem this is, and I would just encourage people to continue to come forward with their stories.
I will continue to encourage them to do that, too. I'd like to add, too, that, you know, in a lot of ways, I've been blessed. A lot of good things have come of this. It hasn't been all doom and gloom. I get to look at a smiling baby, helping new legislation be written, and the pro- in, uh, helping new legislation be written, and, um, the pro-life movement has picked up my story, and, um, I don't know, community action, women are finally feeling like they have a voice, so good things are happening.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'll be in touch with you as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, we're going to go around the table with council, and we'll start with Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was on the mountain a couple days this weekend, uh, and it was a busy place. We had, uh, the Nordic skiers were there, and the parking lot was full, and the lodge was full. Uh, the Hogadon had, uh, high school meet up there this weekend, and that parking lot was, it was hard to find a place to park, and then we thought, well, we'll just drive on over to the biathlon club and take a look at that, and, uh, talked to a few of the folks that were there, they were there for the National Guard meet, and there were, I think, 90 guardsmen here from all over this neck of the woods. Um, and I talked to one of the guys, and he said that they had the choice of going east to another biathlon or coming to Casper, and they'd heard about this one, he says, "We'll be here every year." So the mountain was busy, and I was really glad to see that, so that was a good thing. Uh, last week, we had a Amoco Reuse Joint Powers Board meeting, uh, basically not a lot of business conducted, other than pay the bills. We elected new officers and made committee assignments, and then we had a meeting this week of the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee. Uh, we welcomed some new members, and we discussed the, the construction that's going to be starting on Midwest, heading towards the west from, I believe it's Ash, and so that's going to be a little bit of inconvenience to the folks there, but, uh, when we get done with it, it'll look like Yellowstone, and it's going to be a nice wide street, and have some parking, so we'll be getting that done. Uh, we elected new officers for the OYD group, and the other thing I want to tell you about is, uh, we, we announced to the group that we're going to do the annual awards to the OYD folks, and, uh, I think we've done this for about 10 years now, and we actually have a number of awards. We have one for new construction, we have one for substantial building renovation and reuse, uh, facade upgrades, landscaping, creative signage, and we've got a Good Neighbor Award, and then we've got a Redevelopment Partner Award. So we'll be having the committee submit names of businesses for that, and then we'll be having an awards, uh, sometime in the spring, May? Yeah. So anyway, I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the, the only comment I have would be on the, the additional costs on the Bleacher Project caught my attention, just like it did everybody else. And that, it appears to me that work was already done. I would like to see where we had a project tracking sheet, you know, just a flash picture on each thing, so we knew. Uh, I can't really come on that, on that, because I don't know the background of it and reading it, but it would make it easier for me making decisions in the, in the future, and for people to see what those things were, um, because it does seem like a lot, and was it unavoidable, or was it avoidable? We don't, I, I don't know, but those are things I'd like to look at.
Mr. City Manager, in the past, I know I've seen a big list of our projects. Do we still do that?
Your Honor, that, that report that Councilmember Walsh is talking about, so, there's a report that goes to the, uh, Public Services Director, and we are right on the verge of sending that out to council when, when it's published, so you'll be, you'll start to see a, a project report come out.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So it's on my desk right now, so you need to get it.
Excellent.
There's hope. Anything else?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank, uh, you, Madam Mayor, and the vice mayor for meeting with the, uh, the people who have been trying to raise public awareness about the issue of sexual assault, which I have, uh, in my own way, been working, uh, with my entire career, um, seeing both victims and perpetrators on numerous occasions, and it is a serious problem that most people are not aware of. Um, and so, and I think this is a positive thing to put a, put a, a study group together and, and to come up with some recommendations, and hopefully some public awareness as well, and it's also good to see the role of alcohol brought up, because that is a key component in any solution. But I also want to say something positive about our chief, who's been working on this problem since long before any of this was brought to the attention of the public, uh, through these, through this testimony, and, and it is a, a, a difficult matter to, uh, make sure that people are properly trained, and to make sure that investigators are, investigations are conducted properly. Obviously, mistakes get made, uh, but I want to commend Chief Walt, Walsh, or Chief, Chief, Chief Wetzel for his efforts, and, uh, and, uh, and I want to make sure that people know that those, that, that, that the chief has certainly persuaded me that he takes this problem very seriously, and has been working on ways to, uh, to ensure that these, this work is done well, and that he has been working on that, uh, for quite some time, and so I think we should remain supportive of our police department as they, uh, continue to work in this very difficult area of investigative work.
Councilman Huckabee.
I attended the chamber, um, meeting today, and they just had a brief meeting, um, as they were having their Christmas party for their board members today. Uh, one of the things that they did discuss was, um, the separation of the visitor center from the Chamber of Commerce going over to the Casper Area Convention Center and Visitors Bureau, I think I got all of that, um, and that the new visitors services will be located up at the Five Trails Museum, and that's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Murphy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just echo what, uh, Councilman Walsh said, he took the words out of my mouth, so, and Councilman Powell took some of the words out of my mouth, so I don't have much left to say. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Johnson.
Not a whole lot. I missed the Regional Water Joint Powers Board today, um, because I'm in training for work, um, and I have a meeting with the Casper Area Convention Visitors Bureau, uh, next week, and that's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Morgan.
Thanks, Mayor Humphrey. Uh, last week, I went down to Cheyenne for a WAM winner workshop, which is the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, and they just provided, uh, an in-depth look at just local government in general, although, also ethics and integrity, and municipalities and finance. So it was great to just kind of get learned up on that. City staff has been great this whole time in getting us prepared, uh, to take this seat, so I appreciate that, and also, uh, the opportunity to go down there. It was, uh, it was a great learning lesson, and I, I plan on attending more workshops if possible. Also, in addition to that, some of the correspondence that I've been getting directly from citizens, I think it's been great. Uh, one gentleman in particular did email me back and said, this was the first time that he's ever gotten a response from city council, so I find that unfortunate, but I'm happy to kind of fill that gap, and I hope to continue to do so, so please reach out to me when necessary, and, uh, 24/7 on email, and I'll answer my phone when I can, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, just a couple things. Uh, as was mentioned last Thursday, um, I spoke for the, uh, leadership class, and it was, it was great, I know some of you are still here, um, uh, but it was a good opportunity to have that conversation with them about city government, but, uh, more importantly, when we talk about leadership, about, um, being empowered to, um, be a part of your community, and I've said this before, and I, I mentioned it to the leadership class, it's easy to, to complain and, and to do those things, but it's much, much harder to get involved, um, and put your name on the line, and go out there, and, and do that either quietly or, or loudly, um, and it is difficult, so, uh, keep up the good work and, um, change your community, guys, okay? Uh, to have some meetings this week coming up, Casper Housing Authority, um, trying to think what else, Mayor Commissioner meeting that we'll have tomorrow at 7:00 in the morning, can't wait to be up that early.
You're up that early.
I am, I'm up that early, anyway.
You're just going to miss the gym.
Yeah, exactly. Um, got Mayor, Mayor, um, City Manager meeting, uh, this week as well, and then a couple other meetings happening as well, so. And, on Monday, I went and saw Hidden Figures. Go see it. Fantastic movie, so it's a, it was a great way to spend Martin Luther King Day with my kids and my family, uh, to go see that movie, so go see it.
Um, just a thank you to our city staff, because I know we're pretty gung-ho up here. We started piling a lot of things on you, myself especially. Things don't happen overnight, and so while we're very excited and we want to make change immediately, that's not the way it works, so kudos to the police department for implementing change and examining what's going on over there. I know that there's some reporting things you're working on, some objectives, um, a lot of good things happening over there with the city manager's office. We're working on a little bit different focus of just sticking with essential services and, and maybe not spending money that we don't have to, so bumping up the budget process is a pretty big burden to the staff, so I just want to give everybody a heads-up that we may have to be very gentle in our requests for a little while, because the city manager might lose a little bit more hair than, I, there may, there may be less there than yesterday, so.
I don't know why.
At least you don't have to color yours every month. So you guys are fabulous. Um, so with that, the next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 7th, 2017, in the council chambers. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Right? All right? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
Does she want any votes?
I don't know, Jesse didn't.
All members voting aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.[1794.38]